Good evening and welcome to the May 18th meeting of the Revere City Council. Everyone, please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all. That's great. (inaudible) Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas. Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Reardon.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number one, a certificate of commendation will be awarded to Rick and Jody Frenney for the Little Ricky Foundation in Autism Awareness.[67.22][67.22](applause)
Come on up. Bobby. Bobby. Bobby.
Yeah. That's what it's all about.
Okay. Thanks.
So I'll just read the certificate of commendation. Hopefully, people can hear. In acknowledgement of your raising awareness and providing financial support for autism and other development disabilities through the Little Ricky Foundation, special recognition is hereby accorded to Rick and Jody Frenney of the Little Ricky Foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you.[138.19][138.19](applause) And before I give the mic over to Rick, I just want to say a few words and talk about the great impact that they've had, that Jody and Rick have had, on special education, and how grateful we are, you know, as a city and as a city council for all the work that you do, because it does mean a lot. And to put it in dollars and cents, you know, over the last seven years, I think you've raised over $90,000 for...
Yeah, we just passed $90 after this last...
Just past $90,000, so next year we'll hit $100.
We'll hit $100 next year.
And the amount of blood, sweat, and tears that you put into it is really appreciated up here by all of us, and we all know you very well, but I thought it was fitting to be able to give you the public recognition that you guys deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Call you.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Rigo. Thank you to the council, and most all of you have either donated the support of our foundation one way or another, and we do appreciate it. And it's all about community. My wife does most of the work here. I'm the one that's in on dating people with texts and Facebook messages to buy tickets. But this past year, we just passed our $90,000 mark, and our goal with this past event is to work with LoJack and local police stations, Revere, Malden, Sargus, and we're going to provide GPS bracelets for at-risk kids who wander, autistic kids who wander, more of the younger ones. And that's where our money's going to this past year. So we couldn't have done it without the community involvement, and I want to do special thanks to all the teachers out there in the Revere School Program. They're the best. They're second to none from early intervention, you know, Ms. Cassetter and Mr. Castriano and Ms. Jenru, Mr. Nazar up at the high school. There's just so many names to throw out there. But they've all had an impact on my children's lives, one way or another, and I just want to thank them and want to thank you, and thank you, Counselor Rigo, and the rest of the council for this wonderful commendation. We do appreciate it, my wife and I. Thank you.[273.02][273.02](applause) I'd like to give these bracelets off, okay? I do have three. These are just Little Ricky Autism Support bracelets, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Rick. Congratulations.
Please forgive me about the allergies, and it's also my first on-screen speech appearance for this unoccasional mark, I guess, so... Ricky's at the SOAR program now. At the North Shore Consortium at Salem State, it's a post-grad program offered from our Revere Public Schools. It's about transitioning from the schools to life, and he's doing some wonderful things up there at Salem State College with the SOAR program. So say thanks, and, all right? Okay, we gotta get back to business. I just want to say you have been a really good city on giving my dad and my mother a special award for Best Autistic Fundraiser to help all those kids with autism needs more help, so... Thanks. Thanks. All right. Thank you. Oh, sure. Picture? Picture, yeah. Sure. Come on up there, girls. Come on up here. Sure, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Hey, ladies and gentlemen. Where's my... Where's my...
Do you need help there?
Yeah. Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance amending Section 2.12.130 of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to financial impact statements.
Proponents, are there any proponents with regard to this matter? Any proponents? Hearing non-closed that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing non-closed that side of the hearing. Counselors. Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I understand that this is going to go to the Ways and Means Subcommittee, so I'll hold off on any extended comments, but I do just want to remind the council that this is an ordinance change that would basically put into best practice some fundamental financial statements that would accompany bond authorization requests. So I think it will help shore up our financial situation, and I think it's a good move for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rigo. Are there any other counselors? Any other counselors? Hearing non, Ways and Means.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on the application of Eastern Equity Partners LLC, 72 Squire Road, Revere, Mass., relative to an amendment of the zoning map of the City of Revere as follows. The zoning map of the City of Revere is hereby amended by changing the zoning of Lot 120 at 428 American Legion Highway from Residence B District to General Business District.
I'll hear proponents first. State your name and address, please.
Thank you, members of the council. Jeff Drago, 62B Commercial Wharf East in Boston, here on behalf as the attorney for Eastern Equity Partners, and its principal, Jamie Russo, that's here with me. If I could just give the council, you may have seen these already...
Certainly.
...copies of a plot plan survey and zoning map for the district. Thank you. Tonight, we're here seeking an amendment to the current zoning map for the City of Revere, which we believe should be a simple application. As it's currently zoned now, if you see on the zoning map, the area, which is 19,000 square feet that my client owns at 428 American Legion Highway, the majority of that parcel or those parcels are zoned for GB or General Business. There is a small sliver of an adjoining parcel that is zoned as RB. In fact, we're just seeking that to keep the lots uniform and contiguous, that it would be changed to reflect the GB district or General Business district that's there now. In fact, my client has two current businesses, a tanning salon and clothing uniform business that are operating as commercial properties now that are under lease, and to keep that entire parcel and area, which is 19,000 square feet, uniform, we're simply asking, seeking that change from the council.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents that want to speak in favor of this? Hearing non-closed that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents that are speak opposed to this? Hearing non-closed that side of the hearing. And Ward Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question at this particular hearing, and I will save the rest of my questions for the zoning subcommittee meeting. I just, there's been some sort of discussion going on among people that are stating that if, in fact, this district is changed to GB, would anything go by right in all those parcels that are attached to this particular property? I ask that to Mr. Attorney Drago.
Yes, Counselor. I don't know what would be as of right, but we have no plan to do anything with that property right now. It's simply, if you notice, that the building that exists is cut right down the middle. Less than half is GB, and the other half would be RB. Our only intention is to keep that uniform. If there was any proposal, I'm sure that would have to go before the zoning board anyway, unless it was something small.
And do you have a list of the butters that were notified for the zoning change?
We submitted a list to the clerk's office, as we were told. I don't have that list on me, but it was submitted, and the letters were postmarked and sent out, as well as an advertisement in the paper.
Okay. I will hold my comments until we have the zoning subcommittee to get further information, because as through the chair that I speak, several area residents have not shown their presence here this evening, but have called me and voiced their concerns about, obviously, there's an intent here to do something with the properties. And so they're asking of me what the proposals might be. I want to be as open and as clear to each and every one of them who have a very interest in this particular location, and I want to be as transparent as hopefully possible. So I'm going to go right from the beginning and ask the questions that they've been asking of me. So I've had some thoughts of my own, but I'm weighing on the people who live there to guide me as to, you know, obviously, the intent of any place, people don't want anything built, and I understand that. But if a proposal comes that's of a good nature, then I want to be able to address that also. But my primary concern is, if the changing of this to GB allows for anything to go by right, then I want to be aware of that.
Sure, and I appreciate your comments, Counselor. I just want to note, and I'm sure if they called you, they must have got some notification...
Well, there's quite a few that called, and I'm shocked that a few of them aren't here today, because I want to be able to lead them in the right direction, but I want their guidance along the way.
And I just want to add, if you take a look at the survey provider that I have blown up rendering, Eastern Equity owns all of the parcels up here, so this is just one small piece. If there was a plan to do anything, which there isn't, I mean, they could simply build on the existing parcels, which are already GB. That's why we have no intention except to clean up the existing...
I am grateful for the rendering of the lot and the way you're presenting it, because it's first, even layman like myself understands what you're talking about, and I can show this to others.
Right.
And in fact, through you, to your client, if, in fact, something is to be developed in that area in the near future, then I would ask that a neighborhood meeting be held and so that we could get the neighborhood input.
Sure.
So that everybody knows exactly what we're talking about in that area.
Yeah, and I...
Because I did get a lot of calls, and I'm taken back.
Sure, and I know from talking to my client, he'd be more than open to have any community process...
Oh, I know your client well, and I know he's open to have these type of discussions.
And also work with your office to facilitate the meeting.
I'm sure he is. I'm sure he is. Thank you, Attorney. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso, are there any other counselors? Counselor Reardon.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Drago, just for the edification of anybody listening to the public hearing, could you just briefly summarize the difference in usages that would be available for that lot were to be rezoned to the GB as opposed to what is now permitted in RB?
So if RB, meaning, you know, if it was a one- or two-family home, you know, could be built within an RB district, there would be, you know, commercial-type uses, commercial buildings, multi-unit, of that nature, but, you know, there is a list, I didn't bring it with me, of all of the allowable uses that, you know...
I'm familiar, I just thought, perhaps what you ought to do is be prepared at the public, I'm sorry, the zoning subcommittee meeting to run that stuff down.
Sure.
And maybe be a little more detailed about what Mr. Russo has plans for at this point. The other thing I would suggest, I'm just looking at the two pieces of information you gave us here. It appears that while the application says 428, at least according to the map that you gave us, it appears to be 448 or closer to 450, the particular lot you're dealing with. I'm not sure whether that was a typographical error or what. If the addresses are correct on the map, on this map here, Jamie, here?
Yeah, Jamie Russo, 72 Squire Road, Revere. The legal address is 428-450.
I see, okay.
That's the total address. It's actually 428, 438, 448, and 450.
All right, very well. And so as one other question, the remaining portions of that lineal plot being 462 on the map, is that, what is the current zoning at 462? In other words, the parcel, which I would assume would be parcel 119 or 118 or both?
462 is RB.
So that's, that would remain RB?
It's a single-family home. I would, I would, I think it would. I mean, I mean, by opinion, I don't think that it should be, given the...
Well, that's, I guess that was my point.
Yeah, I agree.
It seems to me that, I don't know if the city planner would chime in on this, but it seems to me that we're doing, we're doing this a nickel at a time, if we're going to do that. It seems to me that if you take the position that American Legion Highway is, in fact, a highway, and that it is suitable for commercial-type development, that one would assume that the parcels along that corridor would probably lend themselves to a change in the zoning as well. Now, there may be countervailing reasons, and I'm not trying to suggest that there aren't. I'm just saying it's something that should really be looked at, given the fact that it looks like 466 is GB, as well as 476 further on down towards the corner.
Yep.
So that's what we're doing, is we're taking one very small lot, turning it to the GB side that's on its, facing the highway on its right side, and leaving one small, well, not small, one fairly good-sized parcel that is, remains inconsistent.
Yeah, and I would...
Now, and I understand it doesn't help you much, but it just...
No, and I would agree with you, Counselor. Again, I don't own that, and...
Yeah.
And I would think that, you know, that, I mean, even when we attended site plan review, I mean, the board seemed to be unanimously in agreement that both of these parcels should be GB. Whether or not Mrs. Latanzi wants to apply to have that changed, that would be up to her, but...
Well, I, you know, it's not up to her, actually. It's up to us.
Well, I mean, you're right.
Whether she would object is another question, and I understand that, and I know that family quite well, so it's probably worth a conversation. I would think that from her perspective, it would make the lot more valuable, in, you know, just knowing what I know about real estate, it has a little more, it would be a little more, maybe even a benefit to her down the road, or her successors, I would imagine.
I would agree.
All right, well, let me take that up with the city planner before we put this into effect, and we may, I may be offering to amend this at some point, and in fact, it may require a further public hearing, but I think it doesn't make sense to do these little things nickel by nickel here, and then we can just do the whole thing.
Yeah, in fact, the city planner was actually surprised that, where these were all deeded at the same time, all eight lots continuously, that this one particular lot, especially where it had a commercial use on the total parcel, why it wasn't GB, he didn't know, but, I mean, he sort of agreed that it should be.
Okay. Well, thanks very much for your input. I appreciate it. We will take this up as zoning, and I'll try to talk to the city planner beforehand, and perhaps the Latanzi family, and see how they feel about it, just to get everybody's input. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reardon. Are there any other counselors that would like to speak on this matter? Hearing non-closed that side of the hearing. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at this, I think it, obviously, we're going to discuss this in zoning, however, I mean, it really is a no-brainer that this little piece should be contiguous with the rest of the street. And I agree with my colleague to my right that the other parcel should be, and I think Mr. Russo said it, there's already a commercial piece on that RB, which is illegal, obviously, or I suppose you could say it was grandfathered, but however, it is in the residential district, and there's a commercial piece of property on it. So to me, this is a no-brainer, and it's not just because this happens to be a developer who has proven himself, as we all know, we're in the middle of a transformation of Broadway, and I dare say that this developer kicked off that transformation by taking a blighted property across the street, which was City Hall, Variety, and Pharmacy, and transformed that into a great-looking building, and that started the kickoff of revitalizing Broadway. So he's not someone who's coming in here that doesn't have a track record of building quality projects in our city. So I can tell you right now that I'll be supporting this, barring someone dropping a nuclear bomb to show me something that I can't see right now here. Thank you.
We certainly don't want any nuclear bombs dropped, but thank you for your comments, Counselor. Are there any other counselors that are proponents? Hearing non-closed that side of the hearing. Opponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing non will close that side of the hearing, Ways and, zoning.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on the application of Verizon to relocate pole number 2051 approximately 13 feet easterly on Hitchborne Street.
Sir, name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. For the record, my name's Everett Bryant with Engineering and Data Solutions, representing Verizon, New England, at 900 Cheltenham Street in Lowell. Our petition this evening is to relocate one joint-y own pole, number 2051, approximately 13 feet in an eastern direction, and this is necessitated by the reconstruction of the bridge over the MBTA tracks on Winthrop Avenue, Route 145. And as a matter of fact, we were told where to move this pole by the Department of Transportation who's in charge of this project, and I actually surveyed the location, because when it was marked on the ground, I couldn't tell exactly whether it's city property or within a parkway right of way, so it turns out it's just barely over into the city, across the city line on Hitchborne.
Are there any other proponents with regard to this? Hearing non-closed that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing non will close that side of the hearing. I believe this is in Counselor Novosolsky's ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bryant, I just want to make sure, I know we talked earlier, that this particular location does not affect the driveway of that 507 Revere Parkway?
I don't see how it could affect that, no.
Okay, I didn't see the marking on the ground, so I'm not exactly sure.
Their driveway, I don't know the distance, but it's considerably, I think maybe 10 feet beyond where this pole is going.
Okay, just want to make sure it doesn't affect their access into that.
I can't see how it would at all.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor, Counselor Novosolsky. Counselor Guanasso.
Well, I just want to say that this is a gentleman that's been before the city council for many, many years in the past, Everett Bryant. It's a welcome here to come to Revere again.
Thank you.
And every single time, Mr. President, and I'm sure you're aware of, every single time Everett Bryant steps to that podium, he's been nothing but a first-class gentleman, and certainly appreciated. Nice to see you.
I'm humbled by your compliment.
And you look great. But nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Where this is, yeah, hearing is closed. This is, we're going to vote on this tonight, because this is being done to expedite the construction of the new Winthrop Avenue Bridge on the parkway there, and I don't want to see that held up. It's tough enough for people now in the morning, and the traffic in the evening, coming home from work, and if this will move it ahead a week or so, let's do it. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Shall the city council approve the petition of Verizon to move pole number 2051 approximately 13 feet easterly on Hitchborne Street? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Powers.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been approved.
Good luck, thank you.
Calendar item number five, report of the Appointment Subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointment Subcommittee met earlier this afternoon, and we had some appointments and reappointments before us this... I will read them all together collectively. We voted them all out favorably, so I ask that the city council do the same this evening, unless they have any exceptions, we could take that particular item out. The first being the reappointment of C.J. Doherty, Inc., 41 Locust Street, Meffet, as a licensed drain layer. I ask that we hold that. The next is the reappointment of Mercurio Brothers Landscaping, Inc., 193 Crescent Avenue, as a licensed drain layer. That was voted out favorably. The reappointment of Anthony Peroni, 281 Crescent Avenue, Revere, to the Revere Employment Monitoring Committee. That was voted out favorably. Reappointment of Michael A. Bonanno, 85 East Mountain Avenue, Revere, to the Cultural Council. That was placed on hold. Reappointment of Laurie Giadella, 29 Castle Road, Nahant, to the Cultural Council. That was voted out favorably. Then we had the residency waiver of Janice Van Hume Kunlam, Jr., Library Assistant, 74 Wallace Street, Malden. That was voted out favorably. And lastly was the reappointment of Ralph Miolo, the Miolo Construction Company, 157 165 Clock Ave, Chelsea, as a licensed drain layer. I ask that the council vote favorably for all these that were mentioned.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Council President, the residency waiver has to be taken up separately from the other appointments?
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Shall the city council approve the, confirm the appointments as reported by Counselor Guanasso? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Shall the city council approve the residency waiver for Janice Van Hookelum for the position of Junior Library Assistant? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the residency waiver has been approved. Calendar item number six, communication from the city planner relative to Overlook Ridge coming home from work, and, uh, if this will move it ahead, uh, a week or so, let's, let's do it. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Shall the city council approve the petition of Verizon to move pole number 2051 approximately 13 feet easterly on Hitchborne Street? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hass?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bierden?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Is absent.
And Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes. The petition has been approved. Calendar item number five, report of the appointment subcommittee.
Counselor Granasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. The appointment subcommittee met earlier this afternoon, and we had some appointments and reappointments before us this. I will read them all together collectively. We voted them all out favorably, so I ask that the city council do the same this evening. Unless they have any exceptions, we could take that particular, uh, item out. The first being the reappointment of CJ Doherty, Inc., 41 Locust Street, Metford, as a licensed drain layer. I ask that we hold that. The next is the reappointment of Mercurio Brothers Landscaping, Inc., 193 Crescent Avenue, as a licensed drain layer. That was voted out favorably. The reappointment of Anthony Peroni, 281 Crescent Avenue, Revere, to the Revere Employment Monitoring Committee. That was voted out favorably. Reappointment of Michael A. Bonanno, 85 East Mountain Avenue, Revere, to the Cultural Council. That was placed on hold. Reappointment of Laurie Giadella, 29 Castle Road, Nahant, to the Cultural Council. That was voted out favorably. Then we had the residency waiver of Janice Van Hukulum, Jr., Library Assistant, 74 Wallace Street, Malden. That was voted out favorably. And lastly was the reappointment of Ralph Miolo, the Miolo Construction Company, 157 165 Clock Ave, Chelsea, as a licensed drain layer. I ask that the council vote favorably for all these that were mentioned.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Uh, Council President, the residency waiver has to be taken up separately from the other appointments?
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Shall the city council approve the, confirm the appointments as reported by Counselor Guanasso? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hass?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bierden?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes. The appointments have been confirmed. Shall the city council approve the residency waiver for Janice Van Hookulum, uh, for the position of a junior library assistant? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hass?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosowski?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes. The residency waiver has been approved. Calendar item number six, communication from the city planner relative to Overlook Ridge land reclamation agreement and tipping fees.
Placed on file.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Earl.
Counselor Patch.
Um, I think it's important that the people in my ward, uh, get the, this read to, this letter read to them, and, uh, and I can explain to them what, uh, what the process is. Thank you.
This memorandum is intended to provide the city council with information with respect to the use of funds in accordance with the Overlook Ridge land reclamation agreement. As mitigation for the reclamation of the project site, Roseland pays tipping fees to a joint municipal fund on a quarterly basis. These tipping fees include, one, the sum of 5% of gross revenues from materials received at the site, exclusive of all site costs, including trucking, environmental and geotechnical testing, and two, the sum of $2 per incoming truck carrying fill using Salem Street. In accordance with the LRA, all such tipping and mitigation fees shall be used for improvements within the impacted area. The current balance of the project linkage account is $48,996. There are two projects within the West River area that, that the Department of Planning and Community Development is recommending for the use of these funds. One, $25,000 to be utilized for the Revere portion of the Bike to the Sea Trail Rail, and for the balance of the final grading and compaction for the Revere segment of the trail between Malden and Saugus. And two, $23,996 to be utilized for the construction of the West River Dog Park at the open space area at the Sargent Street, Route 1 ramp. Both projects are fully designed and ready to start this spring.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Patch.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, thank, uh, thank, uh, the director, and also, uh, really doing this all, um, for, uh, the work they've been doing, um, along with myself and committees, for the, uh, the Bike to the Sea, and the, uh, also the West River Dog Park Committee, uh, especially for the Bike to the Sea, uh, uh, Ginny and, uh, Molly, uh, who have worked with, with, uh, during the past administration, and also for the four years with the, uh, with Mayor, with Mayor Rizzo, for, uh, uh, to finally get this, uh, completed. Uh, also, often lucky, we had a lot of, a lot of help from, uh, Tony Chanke and his neighbors.
Uh, Tony Chanke, I'm sorry, my mic was off there. We also had a lot of help from Tony Chanke and his neighbors, uh, along with Ginny, uh, and it's, uh, and also, uh, we had a lot of, uh, meetings and a lot of work done with the, uh, on the, uh, West River Neighborhood Dog Park. If, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, El Baker, uh, she, since she's come to, uh, community planning, she's done a, a great job in West River on, uh, several matters, and now she's, uh, uh, going to be doing some work down, I believe, in Oak Island also. Um, also, uh, to Donna Cimatori, whose idea it was, uh, along with Basilla Nicholson, uh, Jean Vecchia, Carol, uh, Delorme, and Rick Sorino out of, uh, out of Representative Vincent's office. And, um, without their hea- help, uh, this wouldn't, uh, wouldn't, uh, the park wouldn't have, uh, won't be completed. Again, this might, people got to realize that this money is strictly coming from Overlook Ridge, uh, has nothing to do with taxpayer money, and, uh, it helps to improve, uh, Ward Six. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Patch. Are there any other councillors? Uh, well, I'd like to take the opportunity to inform the, uh, residents of the Oak Island area particularly, that, uh, there's going to be a meeting tomorrow evening, uh, with regard to the restoration of the Oak Island, uh, park, and, uh, I believe Mrs. Baker is going to be chairing that meeting, and, uh, everyone is invited to attend. I'm not sure of the exact time, but they can, uh, call the mayor's office tomorrow, or call myself, and, uh, by that time, I'll know exactly what time the meeting is. Thank you.
Is this placed on file?
Yeah, this is going to be placed on file, yeah.
Mr. President, I believe the meeting is at 6:30.
6:30, okay. And I would urge anyone that can attend, because it's very important to the neighborhood that we restore that park down there. Thank you.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor relative to a resolution for a park grant.
Going, placed on file? You going to vote on this?
Requesting approval. The mayor's requesting approval of the resolution.
All right, let's, we'll take the vote. I don't have the information. Somebody picked up my paper. Go on and read it. Let me read it. Yeah, read, yeah, just the second page.
This is a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Program for Construction and Improvements to Oak Island Park. Whereas Oak Island Park is a community-wide asset and improvements to this park is a priority as evidenced in the most recent Open Space and Recreation Plan, and whereas Oak Island Park is dedicated, is a dedicated park to rec, way to park and recreation purposes under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, and whereas the renovation of the ballfield, basketball court, playground, walkways, fencing and landscaping at Oak Island Park will greatly enhance recreational pursuits at this facility. And whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks throughout the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Grant Program. And whereas the Oak Island Park renovation project will cost a total of $331,000, which will be reimbursed to the city with a $100,000 in community development block grant funds and $231,000 in park grant funds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and two, the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes and conditions of this grant to be administered by the city of Revere, and three, this resolution shall take effect upon passage.
Madam Clerk.
On the resolution, Counselor Rigo?
John, I'd like to speak. Counselor Hass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, when I was mayor, we took out a similar grant, all right, and there was no water associated, so I was watering of the facility. Uh, and what I'm asking is, is there, does anyone know if there's water, a sprinkler system going to be down there? Otherwise, when it gets dry?
Well, let me, let me say this to you, Counselor Hass, tomorrow evening, there'll be, and I believe you said you were coming to the hearing tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the Satterhouse. Uh, that's something that can be discussed there then. There's also been mention of a, a Bachi Court. Uh, that's something else that's going to be discussed there, so.
I just want to make a statement.
I think, no, I think you make a good point. I think you make a good point. But I think that tomorrow night, we'll, uh, finish all this and know exactly what we're doing. Counselor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as somebody who's spent, uh, 20, over 20 years in the Oak Island area, uh, and played on, on those basketball courts and, and, uh, played in that field, I can understand how we need to, this needs to be done, and, and it's good that we're getting, we're going to get some state money to help do it. Uh, one, I guess one question, and again, it might be for more, um, more for tomorrow, but my understanding is that the state budget or the, the House budget that is currently being negotiated, uh, includes some money for, uh, the renovation of the Oak Island Park. So I don't know if, um, if this would be in, if that would be in addition to this amount or, um, in place of this amount, but, um, I don't know if any, any, uh, of my colleagues have any more information about that, but I know that, uh, there is an earmark in the state budget, um, that's being, again, discussed, um, currently, that, that includes some money for, um, for Oak Island, the Oak Island Park. So that's something to keep in the back of our minds.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll discuss this tomorrow night, and this is, uh, it's very important, not only to the Oak Island neighborhood, but to, uh, Little League in the city, girls' softball, uh, that's what that facility was, uh, built for, to begin with, and, uh, now that it's going to be refurbished, I think it's a good move. That's it. Yeah. Yeah. Roll call, please. The resolution.
On the resolution, Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hass?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bierden?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes. The resolution has been approved.
Motion.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councilors Hass, Guanas, and Powers, that the mayor request Mass DOT to take immediate action in fixing the traffic signalization at the intersection of Revere Street and North Shore Road, and further, that a complete traffic study be conducted to resolve this major traffic bottleneck.
Counselor Hass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as we all know, who traverse Vivitch Boulevard and Ocean Avenue, the, going up through, uh, Revere Street, it's a complete mess. Matter of fact, it becomes dangerous if you're going, uh, north or southbound on, uh, Revere Street. Uh, they have to fix the signalization there, because you have cars like Dodgemont up there, cars coming at you from the north, and cars trying to go along with what it is said, the green light, uh, going north. Uh, you've got some major problems there, and what I'm concerned at, anyone looks in at the beach the last couple of weeks, uh, if an emergency vehicle has to get down, it extends the time of the, uh, traffic, because of the traffic, uh, is always that gridlock, and I think that we have to address this situation right now once and for all, you know, by having the DC, uh, not DC, but state DOT take immediate action in resolving the problem.
Counselor, uh, Janino? All right, le, I, you know, ladies, you know.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion comes where there were four councillors driving to an occasion last week, and we had the opportunity to discuss this particular location, certainly one of the most hazardous locations within the community, with the exception of, uh, Brown Circle and Bell Circle. When you take, when you come from the west to the east going towards the beach, and you take a left turn onto North Shore Road from Revere Street, you have the traffic coming from the east to the west right at you, because the light signals a left turn, but then the green light appears when you're coming from the east to the west. And so what you do is, is a happy mixture that everyone's going to meet in the middle. The unfortunate thing happened that, um, the council president almost got in a nasty accident, wh, this very night that we've talked about this earlier, and he had a very precious passenger in his car, Mr. Robert Hass. And so, uh, I'm very concerned about that, but not to make light of the, the situation. This is a very, very dangerous situation. It has to be corrected immediately. It's either you take a left on the arrow and stop the traffic from coming from the east to the west, or one or the other. You can't have both, because, uh, is it disaster waiting to happen? And, and I traveled and traversed that particular area several times throughout the day, as other people do. It's very, very dangerous. So we need, we, we need immediate results before the summer season starts.
Thank you, Counselor Granasso.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Woman Janino?
Thank you. I think that this is a great motion on behalf of my colleagues. When I was commuting to Salem State, I drove through this intersection every single day, and it was a nightmare, and it was a nightmare in the winter, and it was even worse as soon as it was a nice day out. So I think that as we go into the summer months, it's really important that we address it now, because the beach traffic is going to only add to it, and the construction down there is only going to add to it, so we really need to come up with a solution, because it's a very dangerous intersection, and the way that cars cross each other because of the timing of those lights, something bad is bound to happen, and I think that, um, this is one of several intersections in the city that we really need to look more closer at, because there are a lot of these intersections that, um, one of these areas is going to see a problem, and especially with the fire station so close to that, it's, it's a hazard, and we need trucks to be able to get in and out of there in a timely manner. So I think it's a great motion, and I'm happy to see it on here, and I look forward to working with it further in committee, I'm assuming. Thank you.
Are there any other councillors? Steve, Counselor Morbido?
Thank you, Mr. President. I strongly support my colleagues in submitting this motion. Um, I got a couple complaints on Friday night, also, when I was attending an event, I went home, um, I read my pack, my council packet, and I noticed, uh, my colleagues put in this motion, so I commend them on this. Not only is that a dangerous, um, intersection, the timing of that light is way off and backs up traffic. Um, if, if you're traveling, if you're going to take a left down Revere Street, um, basically gets the tra, you basically can't get in the left lane, so, be, because of the cars going straight ahead, so it actually, the timing of the light is definitely off as well.
Is that, is that it, Mr. Morbido?
Yes.
You finished? Thank you. Any other councillors? Counselor Novosowski.
Mr. President, thank you. I know it's, it's not my, directly in my ward, but my ward is at the end of Revere Street, uh, going onto Ocean Ave, but, you know, I know, we should be dealing also with the Traffic Commission on this, because they're going to have to determine, uh, if we do something on Revere Street, the lower end, it's a city ordinance change, the lights won't have anything to do with it, but it, in part and partial of it, and I'm not making light of it, not being negative, I'm just trying to find a solution. If I may, if I may, Counselor, I let you speak, let me speak. Thank you. And I would think that, one way or the other, that lower end of Revere Street may, we have to may, maybe look at making it a one-way going eastbound down into Ocean Avenue, and then the only way out of there is coming back up through Beach Street, which is right in the middle of my ward, or, and that would eliminate that cross-traffic. But it's just something to talk about and to open up discussion on it, because it is a bad intersection, and I can, I can relate to where people are talking, but I'm just just thinking of a solution, and I don't know, I don't think the lights are going to solve it, honestly, but, and I don't think the state's going to help us solve it. So I, I think we ought to think about it, look at it, and discuss it. It's only a thought. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Novosowski. Uh, you know, it is in my ward, it's directly in the center of my ward, and I think when they first opened that garage down there, and we had, uh, two or three MBTA police officers down there directing traffic, uh, to make it convenient for people that parked in the garage that lived in the North Shore, it worked fine, but all of a sudden, those officers are not there anymore, and people that are trying to get down Oak Island or the Point of Pines, they're sitting in traffic on Revere Street to take that left-hand turn, they let two or three cars go through, and then the light turns green, and they're, uh, taking their life in their hands. So, um, I think it's very, very important, uh, that the, uh, this matter be solved as quickly as possible, uh, and it's not just, again, it's not just the summer traffic, but that, that makes it worse, but it's the traffic coming out of that garage at night. So, uh, I think this is something that has to be, uh, worked on very quickly, and I'm going to refer this to.
Mr. President, one more thing. None of us mentioned the additional rental units that are coming online. 197 plus 230.
I don't even like to think about that.
I know that.
I don't even like to think about that, because.
That's going to be gridlocked completely.
There are probably going to be another 1,500 cars down on Ocean Ave when all is said and done, every day.
Right.
Plus what you have coming in and back of, uh, BJ's, another 300, 400 cars, which will affect Counselor Granasso, I think, up there, and the entire city of Revere.[1760.96] It seemed to work a little better when they were down there. So, yeah, so maybe we'll amend this motion to have the MBTA come before the City Council and discuss this matter further. Because, you know, the people in the city, we bear the burden and the hardship of all of this traffic, and it's not, it's not right.
Yeah. The MBTA, or do you mean Mass DOT?
Well, Mass, well, Mass DOT, MBTA Police also for the garage.
Very good, okay.
Okay. Are there any lates now?
Yes, one late.
One late motion presented by Councilor Guanasso that the mayor request the DPW to fill all potholes on Sprague Street. This motion is being requested on behalf of the senior center.
Councilor Ganaso.
Mr. President, I had senior citizen ask me today of this particular nature. I'm not sure whose ward this is, and I think it's probably Ward 1, and that's why I took the liberty to submit the motion in the absence of a Ward 1 counselor. I make this motion on behalf of the members who go to the senior citizen building. They said that Sprague Street is horrendous, it's full of potholes, and they need some help immediately. So I ask that the Department of Public Works fill this particular, the potholes as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilor Ganaso.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn the meeting, I'd like to mention that tomorrow in Ward 1, there is a municipal election for the Ward 1 council seat. I believe the polls open at 7:00, and they're open until 8:00 p.m. So I would urge everyone that has an interest in Ward 1 to get out and vote. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may.
Councilor Novosowski.
And while you're making public service announcements, and we won't be meeting next week, remind everybody that in two weeks, they will be shutting down the Revere Beach Parkway going onto Harris Street and Winthrop Avenue for the whole weekend. It'll include Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday night, reopening Monday morning. So plan on a lot of traffic on the Revere Beach Parkway in, in both directions, and bypassing, and just follow the detour signs. Unfortunately, they're going to have, taking everybody through Bell Circle, but that's the only way they can get around that at this point, so...
Thank you for that info.
So that'll go on for two weekends in a row while they take the bridge down and replace it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council Riordan?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you for the leeway while we're doing PSAs. I want to remind everybody about Memorial Day program at, at Legion next Monday at 11:00 a.m. Hopefully, we'll have a good day. Hopefully, it's always a great, great program honoring our, our late war veterans and veterans altogether. And I urge everybody to get down there, it's a great take. Plenty of room on the Legion lawn, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Riordan. With that said, this meeting and council stand adjourned until 6:00 p.m. on June 1st.